Okay, um, welcome to the special board meeting. For April fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, we're gonna start with a roll call. Kinsey?
Gerlach?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Becker?
Um, Mr. Becker will be joining us momentarily. So, um, we do have a number of, um, action items. Let's start with the first one, A revision to boundaries adjustment advisory committee charter. You've all gotten a copy, um, of that. And would someone please read the motion?
I move that the revisions to an advisory committee charter for the study of the facility master planning task force recommendations pertaining to community impact of repurposing schools to four K through eight facilities and proposed school boundary changes as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. James?
I move that we, um, modify the, uh, the amended amendment changing on line twenty-two, the first two words of the second sentence, the committee replacing those two with the district administration shall present those recommended boundary changes to the Board of Education.
Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Um, I, we need to vote on that amendment. So can we just do all in favor? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone want to discuss the amendment?
So I'll summarize it for since everyone just received it. Um, the amendment is to change the purpose or to modify the purpose of the original charter so that that committee who, um, opted not to recommend either scenario A or scenario B, that they have latitude to explore a scenario C. Um, given, um, two constraints that A continues to address the budget deficit through school closures and consolidations. And B reduces overall district capacity to addressing, to address declining enrollment. So basically, um, there's not any real other guidance to that, um, committee other than making sure that it's still in align with the overall, overall objectives of the facility master plan.
Do we have to do your amendment to the amendment first, though? So we're gonna have to, um, with regard to James's amendment to the amendment, all in favor? Oh. Okay, discussion about that. Go ahead.
And James, if I'm not, um, the part that's being modified, please stop me on this. Does this still leave open as possibility K eight discussions within the committee or are they just completely eliminating that part? Would that be in the motion or would that be in the second part, James?
I think we, it, so if we just handle whether or not we appreciate whether the administration can make the presentation or if we want the committee to make the presentation, let's handle that first and then we can address what you brought up.
So any discussion about that particular aspect of this? Okay, then all in favor say I, I opposed. Name? Okay. We can move on to the actual, um, overall amendment. Go ahead, James.
So Brian, what I think, uh, was presented by, um, Ms. Byer last, uh, during the working session was that the magnitude of change to all the feeder patterns between the middle school and the high schools based on the changes to go to a K through eight, um, program, um, were too large, right? And so I don't know that, uh, the, they wouldn't consider an alternate plan, but I think what we're hearing from the committee is, um, let's be very concise and let's be very sensitive to the amount of disruption, um, the facility closures create.
Anybody else? Okay, then I think we're ready to vote on this amendment. Kinsey? Oh, go ahead.
So if we accept this, are we saying there will be no more K eight schools that, are we still leaving that open as a possibility?
I believe it's, but there's potential still, but, um,
It's not required.
Not required. It's, it's leaving them for a third option. Since the, the two scenarios have been rejected by the committee.
I'm, but I'm questioning what James just said. I thought I heard James say that there can no longer be the option of K eight because of what it's doing to the feeder patterns. Did I misunderstand that?
So I, I wasn't declarative. I didn't say there cannot or there can. But what we heard from the administration during our working session was that the committee was uncomfortable with the amount of change to the feeder patterns. So whether or not they go back and as part of option C, they readdress that at a different scale, I, I don't think the amendment is, um, constraining them at all from doing that. I do think that if we recall from the working session, we did hear the administration's desire and the committee's desire to be more focused in the changes and look at the problem, which primarily is an elementary school problem. Um, so I wouldn't expect a new and revised K through eight program to come from as scenario C.
Good, Brian.
Say clarification, that's no changes. I guess I'm going towards you with this, Lynn, is there's no changes with current K eight programs. So we're not looking at eliminating any K eight with Aldo or Red Smith or any of the other K eight programs that, I think that I appreciate the work that the committee has done. I'm gonna support this, but I think we still need to look at making sure that we do our once in a generation opportunity of making sure that we are providing the best public education for our students and we need to be open to the ideas on that. I genuinely appreciate the work the committee's done. We need to make some decisions on this as well with it, so.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Lynn.
So Brian, I, I'm looking for, um, some input and some wisdom here. Do you support this now as amended or not?
I haven't spoken on any presentation that the committee's shared. So, um, my approach has been letting the committee do the work and kind of observe it. So until they present something, I'm not confident to say anything on it until they've shared it with us. That makes sense. I, I haven't, I want the committee to do the work so we have something to present. So I don't have a biased opinion based on what the work is from the presentation until we see what they're presenting to us. I, I'm gonna support the amendment, but I mean, overall, Lynn asked whether I support this. I, I support their, their option. Um, obviously, we're the ones that are gonna be held accountable and the final decision on whatever plans come out. So, um, for them to give the if it gives us another opportunity or that the committee feels fine with, then let's look at what they've got.
Okay, Andrew.
So is this, is this giving more freedom to the committee? Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, James.
Right. I know that you stepped in probably after we started the discussion, but ultimately this kind of codifies in an amendment the presentation that, uh, Vicki Byer provided last week that option A and B, uh, were not recommended. So this gives the committee the latitude to come up with an option C.
I, I think whether we officially did it or not, committees sometimes do what committees will anyways. And I guess I, I always want to hear the best the committee has to bring forward. That being said, um, this committee never was, nor is it becoming a binding committee.
Yeah.
So it will be an important, it, it will be an important piece of information, a very important one to, to guide our work, but I, I never want to see a committee too constrained as long as they're staying within the bounds of things that are, you know, legally possible. And I do, I think there are some bigger, there's some bigger conversations that have to be had at a lot of levels about, about K eights. Um, I've heard people with strong opinions on both sides about just the merit of, of K eight itself. We, we have some great K eights here, but, uh, would they work everywhere? And I think if the committee is coming back to us with this, I think it's a reasonable amendment. So I'll, I'll support the amendment.
All right. Any other questions or discussion about this amendment? Okay, Kinsey, I think we're ready to vote. I'm sorry? I can, I think.
I probably will get logged in.
Give Andrew a chance to log in.
Online voting is now open. Nancy, do you want to voice for vote?
Hi.
Are you in, Andrew?
If I vote.
Okay, very good.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, very good. We're gonna move on to a couple of, um, quick votes. Um, next is, uh, employment of staff. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Nancy, do you want to voice vote?
Hi.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next is resignation of staff. Will someone read the motion, please?
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Brian?
I notice on our resignations, um, we're losing someone incredibly, well, all of our employees are obviously definitely important to our district. Um, the amount of operate, the experience that Josh has presented to our district in many, many years and leading many, many things. And there's going to be a huge loss to our district. And I know as an individual, I'm sure the rest of the board appreciates the work that he's done and the amount of, um, experience that we're losing is going to impact us. And he's, he's done a fantastic job helping us out and it's a, it's a tough loss, but I want to thank Josh for all the work that he's shared with us.
He'll be with us through June thirtieth. Um, and, you know, that, that's, that will be helpful. But, um, yes, I, I concur totally. So, all right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Nancy, do you want to voice vote?
Hi.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next on the agenda is the selection approval of board vacancy interview questions. Um, you all should have a copy of a proposed list of questions. Um, some of these are taken, um, from previous times and we'd had to do this, this, uh, process. Um, so, but there's, I think there's some people here who have some thoughts about how these should look. I, I think the last time we did this, we were in the middle of the pandemic, so, um, and I see that the one about COVID has been taken out. So, um, that's good. So anyway, um, I'm going to, um, Kinsey will, um, is, is going to make modifications as needed. Um, I recommend that we stick with six because we have six, um, board members and six candidates and there's some symmetry there.
Thirty minutes.
And thirty minutes, exactly. So, um, brevity will be important here. Um, so, and open up the floor to any suggestions?
Is it email or is it in?
No, you just got a hard copy.
Or hard.
Yeah. There you go. So, James, go ahead.
Uh, fellow board members, I recommend, um, so while we're discussing is if we want to reference them by number, um, so in reading them, first of all, I want to thank Lynn for pulling them together and presenting them to us. Um, as far as the questions, I, I would like to recommend an order change. Um, just because question number one lends itself to a closing statement, right? So I would recommend question number four going first. Question number two going second. Question number six going third. Five and then one. So basically going down to what do you know? What do you bring? Oh, sorry. Yeah, um, between six and five, so four, three, six, three, five, one. Okay, the first question would be question number four. The second question would be question number two. Third question would be question number six. Fourth question would be question number three. No, number two, at number two.
So four, two, six, three.
Five, one.
Second from the bottom.
I know, but what's the number?
Well, it isn't anything yet.
We have one, two, three, four. What's five and what's six?
Five is five.
Six.
And one is six.
Yeah. Give Kinsey, if, if.
Yeah, it's like this, give everyone a couple.
Go ahead.
Moments.
So I would just like to read the new numbers now and let's make sure we all got it the same. My number now is six, two, four, one, five, three. Is that right? Six, two, four, one, five, three. I've changed the numbers to that. Is that right?
No.
Is that what you all have?
You're just doing it backwards than how I said it, so.
Well, I wrote down what you said and I'm reading what they now are. And Kinsey has the same thing.
So question four is one.
Yep.
Question two is two.
Right.
Question six is three.
Yes.
Question three is four. Question five is five. And question one is six.
Yes.
Six. Four. Take my key. The first que, the first question you said is number four on our sheet or number six on our sheets?
Number four on our sheet.
Okay. Oh, yeah, four, you just have the, so.
Yeah.
Four.
Everyone bear with us here.
Six, yeah. Three is four. Yeah, same thing presented to, to, that, that being said, my only question would be the this board administration role is maybe the most technical and, and least intuitive for maybe someone who hasn't been studying it closely and I get not putting number one first. But I would maybe and maybe like to see us, if we're gonna do that, do instead of four, two, six, three, five, one, maybe just get the, switch the first two around and have the other one come second, but I'm not, it's not super important to me. It's just.
So Andrew, I'll, I'll just explain my rationale. I, from the way they were ordered, now it goes from awareness to contributions to reasoning. That's, that's the order, awareness of role. Series of questions on contribution. And then, uh, reasoning.
Um, it's like, I'm not, I'm not gonna lose sleep over it. It's, um, I think it's also with, with the understanding that there are different the state of Wisconsin allows for a range of roles and interrelationships between boards and administrations. I don't, I'm not moving, I'm not moving an amendment for change. I'm okay with what's been proposed.
Brian.
Why don't we look at each question now that we have sort of the order and break down from that spot? So if we have any concerns, we are on the same spot. So looking at the please describe one first, if we have any change and just go with the way that we've got it on there, would that work out for us?
Sorry, I'm not following you.
So let's look at each question now that we have the order rather than jumping with it.
Um, just be aware that we have seven minutes until our first interview is to start.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah. So should we have Kinsey go ahead and reorder them as described?
Well, hang on.
I think we need to approve on the questions as a group first. So if we look at the questions, I don't see any huge things, but I think as a group, we need to at least get the okay from everyone that the wording is fine on there.
Okay.
So I guess my first question would be to look at question one being please describe, do we have any changes that we want to make with that? And are we saying the whole question out or are we? Okay, so are we?
Let me read silently, sorry.
So are you talking about the reordered first question? So question four, uh, on our list here. I have no issue with that. Does anyone else? The way it's worded? Okay. Number two. Anybody? Okay, next question. Okay, okay, Brian. Next question, question six.
But I would recommend a change to question six.
Okay.
I would strike A. And I would change letter D, removing or making a change from decision making to collaboration.
All right. Does any, does anyone have any objection to those changes? I'm good with those. We're striking A. And in D, we're changing decision making skills to collaboration skills. Thank you. All right, next is the, um, number three. Anyone have any objection to that? Go ahead, Brian.
Could strike the first part before the question of what would you do? I think that's fine that they're, they're gonna be looking at the past and the future on this. So I'd like to strike the first part of it and just have the what would you do from that part on?
I'll second that.
All right, anyone want to speak to that at all? Just starting with what would you as a board member? That would be the beginning. So, all right.
Like maybe some, add the word challenge in there after it or something, you know, like what would you as a board member prioritize? What challenges we face, something like that? Or is it okay? Everybody understood it? Okay, sorry.
Can you tell me specifically what you'd like to see?
Well, when I read it, you know, like when you start with reflecting on the district's challenges over the past five years, we're talking about the district's challenges. What would you as a board prior, member prioritize of the challenges is what I'm saying.
Oh, I see. Okay. How exactly, can you read it out like how you would like it to read exactly?
Yeah. What challenges? What, like what challenges would you prioritize?
Okay. Do you have that, Kinsey? You want to put, um, what district challenges would you prioritize? Would that make sense? Okay, all right.
As for remember you want to lock in there?
Uh huh.
Okay, got it.
Okay. All right. So the next is, um, any, any other changes to that, to number three? What's that?
The third one, this.
Okay, yeah, so, but I'm, I'm doing them as I have them right now. So next one is five. Go ahead, Brian.
I'd like us for add at the end, um, the district schools, students and public education in Wisconsin. Because I think the impact that we have as a larger district and the direct impact it has with us is key.
So district schools, students and what?
Public education in Wisconsin.
Okay, anybody object? Hang on just a second. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Brian.
And instead of saying ways you might advocate for, I'd like for might taken out, so ways you will advocate for.
Okay, do you have that, Kinsey? Okay, we're still on five, yep. All right. All right, and finally, number one. Go ahead.
Um, I, I just think it's a little wordy with some of the stuff. I'd be interested in just to know why they're applying to join the board. Taking out the first part of what is the fundamental, most important reason.
So what's the, what's the?
Why are you applying for the join to the board? That way, if they have time, they can build off of more than one reason.
So can you tell Kinsey exactly how you'd like it, unless someone objects to that? Anybody? Can you just let Kinsey know exactly how you?
Be the last seven words. Yeah.
Okay. James?
While, while we're talking through these questions, Kinsey, I cannot remember. Should there be a preamble or a question? Because were the candidates presented with all of the requirements as far as time? Um, goes as it relates to their board position? In the, if, in the advertisement or the information that was sent out, all candidates understand the time commitments associated with the role?
I did include when I sent out for the interviews, um, the typical dates of the meetings and that special board mem, um, meetings are scheduled at times and.
Okay. All right. That, that is all six questions. Um, hang on just a second. So how I see a clean copy of this, just on board docs? Can you print them out? That'd be great because I'm, I've scribbled a lot on this now. So, all right, so I, I guess I would need a motion for, for these questions to be approved.
I move that we approve the questions as, um, adapted.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Do we need to do a vote? Okay, let's do a regular vote.
I'm just gonna do a voice vote. Okay. Mills?
Hi.
Welch?
Hi.
Lyerly?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Gerlach?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to, um, All right, so we're going to, um, let Kinsey work her magic and get us a clean copy of those questions and then we will start up with interviews. That, I'm pretty amazed. Go ahead, Brian.
Just for clarification, I know different groups, when we've presented questions, it's important for us as board members to treat them verbatim. Exactly the same for each candidate on there, so. I've done it, I'm sure other people have where you kind of maybe update as we go through, but it's very important that we read it verbatim on it, so.
That speaks to, um, importance of all of our candidates being treated exactly the same. They'll all get the same questions, they'll all get thirty minutes. They'll all need to move quickly since, since we, they only do have thirty minutes to get through, uh, six questions. And, um, so, uh, Lori Blakesley has joined us at the table, thank you very much. And she's gonna give a warning, a five-minute warning, um, and keep us to the thirty minutes. So that, uh, the board can focus on, on the questions and taking notes. Andrew.
Are, are the slots thirty minutes or does the candidate have thirty minutes in the seat? Which is not exactly the same thing and makes a little bit of a difference.
We will, each person will get thirty minutes to answer six questions. If they, they won't be able to go over the thirty minutes.
Okay, so if everyone uses the full allotment of their time, it's going to take about thirty-two or thirty-three minutes each round. Although in practice, people may not. But they have thirty to work with.
Right.
They have more time for a closing statement or if, okay.
I'd, I'd, actually, I don't know about, they have thirty minutes to do all of it, so the five.
Right, they don't have more, but if they have, if questions of, yeah, they get the full, they, they won't be stopped. If questions one through five were quicker, they, thirty minutes.
Right.
Unless they are done soon, okay.
Yep. Nancy?
Are they going to have a, a copy of the questions in front of them?
No.
Not even when they're sitting there to read them? We, when we do our, when we did the other kinds of interviews we did, and sometimes people hear something, but if they, they wanna read.
I have no objection to that. Do any of you, um, as long, as long as they keep the questions.
Right there.
Leave it there. I know. I have no objection, so we'll have Kinsey, um, put a, put a, uh, the questions there.
Are we going to go around the table and each do a question or?
Yeah, every, we'll just, I, I, I think that, um. We should just all do it the same each time.
Okay.
Are, are there extras to put one over there? Okay. All right. Okay. So before we get started, I just want everyone to know that this process is governed by policy, policy and rule one thirty-three. We will keep time, each board member will ask one question, it'll be the same question each time. They can, um, hopefully make it through all these questions, and if they have time left over at the end, they can make a statement or add anything they'd like. But they will get only thirty minutes. Okay, so, um, get started. Our first candidate is Mr. Stout. Oh dear. Brian, is it okay if we just start with you? Okay, welcome. Uh, Shane Stout. Are you ready? You got the questions there? Very good, okay, go ahead, Brian.
Please describe your understanding of the relationship between the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
So. My understanding, you know, it comes back from. Being able to serve the best interest of the entire educational community. The administration might have not oversee everything. I see the board as overseeing everything in the educational community. And it's really understanding the majority perspective, expressing my views respectfully. And working towards a consensus or compromise that upholds the district's values. And that's what, how I see my role potentially being on the board compared to the administration's role.
Number two, what are the contributions you feel uniquely qualified to make to the leadership of the district?
Can you hit your mic, please? It, it's gonna be turned off every time one of us speak, so you'll have to hit it every time you answer.
Definitely. So as a, as a parent and currently working with our youth in the community. I have firsthand experience with the strengths and limitations of our education system here in Green Bay. My experiences have given me valuable insights into the importance of teacher support. Parental involvement and the need for innovative educational practices. I see this every day with a youth coming into our nonprofit. I see exactly what they need. And I can be that voice here on the board.
We're taking notes, so just bear with.
Absolutely.
Hi Shane. So. Please identify specific examples of situations in which you have demonstrated one or more of these important qualities. A, effective communication skills. B, leadership skills that have produced positive results. Or C, collaboration skills which you think would be effective on a seven-member board.
And you want me to pick one of those three to talk about or all?
All or any of those?
Let's, I think, um, we can start with the most important here is the collaboration skills. That's what I do every single day. I have to collaborate not only within my own organization, but other community members, community leader, parents. And I also have to engage with other nonprofits in this, in our community. We really have to gauge what's going on in Green Bay. So the way that I do that and how I collaborate is being part of our community, going to community events. Organizing regular meetings with different stakeholders within my organization. And now it has to be organizing these meetings with the Green Bay Public Schools stakeholders, the parents, the teachers, everybody involved. Especially, one thing that has come up is our minority service organizations. In getting really heavily involved with our different minority service organizations here in Green Bay. And it's just crucial to gather feedback through those different organizations. And to be able to open lines of communication with our minority leaders here in Green Bay has been huge. Not only for my leadership role in the community, but also my organization that I currently work for. And it's also just being able to take to suggestions of our Green Bay community and our minority leaders. To be able to make those changes appropriately. So that is how I have been collaborating. Skills that have produced positive results. I think when I came on board, um, with my nonprofit, it, they were just stagnant. Really being able to see the growth, building a brand-new facility for our youth. And one of the things I'm most proud of is I started a program, day number one, called No One Left Out. And this program took. All of our underserved youth and was able to give them free access to action sports, free access to our facility. No questions asked, and that's something that I've been most proud of. And taking my leadership, leadership skills from previous roles and implementing them with my current organization. Has, has been everything. Effective communication skills. So I think that is. Probably number two on the list of importance. Because you have to have communication skills, you have to have that open communication with everybody. You have to, when I say everybody, everybody on the board, like, you have to have those communication skills. And being a communication major in, at university and getting my bachelor's in communication and business management. It really opens me up to help and communicate with everybody involved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, next. What district challenges would you prioritize as a, a board member? What are some possible ways you'd address them?
This is probably, you know, my favorite question that you guys handed me because this is why I'm getting involved. This is why I decided to do this, this is why I decided to send in my letter. I think the biggest challenges, there's, there's three huge challenges that I see. Number one. We're losing our amazing teachers to other districts and new career options. We have to recruit new teachers, but first, but first, we have to take care of our own. It costs more to hire than, than to lose our teachers. One of the biggest challenges is addressing the achievement gap. There's a large achievement gap right now in Green Bay Public Schools and ensuring all students have equal opportunities to succeed. I would advocate for evidence-based programs and initiatives that support the underperforming students. And work towards creating an inclusive environment that caters to all diverse learning needs. Thank you.
Okay, Andrew.
Um, as a school board member, what are some specific ways you will advocate for the district's schools, students? And public education in Wisconsin? So, let me get this out. I am passionate about the education and, about education and its power to transform lives. Serving on the board would let me do that and. I plan to actively participate in community events that I, I'm already going to. These community events, but now I can do this as a dual role, not only as a school board member. But also with my current nonprofit organization. And I will do that at every community event. Again, I'll also meet with our minority leaders. And get their opinions. Their advice, their suggestions, because we need it here. I will also work towards a consensus and a compromise that holds the district's values and goals. And I will be, that's what I will do, I will work towards every goal that is put on this table.
Why are you applying to join the board?
So, here in Green Bay. We face our own challenges and bridging the academic and diversity gaps. I'm here to be, to put my experience and my passion to work. To ensure that no child, regardless of background, falls through the cracks. It is not merely about meeting standards but exceeding them. So that all our children can thrive. We must not lose any more of the best teachers in the country. We must give them the tools and resources to succeed, and that is why I am applying for this position.
Okay. Are we on time? I'm sorry? Okay, we have time. Would you like to make a statement or would you like, is there anything else that you would like to say?
There is.
Okay.
So I wrote it down because I have a lot of emotions about this and I wanted to give it correctly out, so. First, I just wanna thank you guys for the opportunity to discuss a cause that is very close to my heart and vital to our future. As a candidate for the Green Bay School Board, I bring not just my qualifications, but my personal journey. And my personal journey is growing up in Flint and Saginaw, Michigan. Cities that many wrote off as lost, some of the most dangerous, poorest cities in America. I'm here, standing here before you, driven by the transformative power of education. Growing up in some of the toughest neighborhoods in America, I experienced firsthand the challenges that come with economic and racial disparities. However, I also witnessed the incredible lifeline that a robust public school system can offer. And it all starts with the amazing teachers. Education in those cities was more than just learning, it was a gateway to a better life, a beacon of hope. It taught me an invaluable lesson. And let me say this, um, poverty has no color. It does not discriminate, and thus our efforts to combat it must be equally impartial and inclusive. I am committed to creating initiatives that not only enhance academic performance. But also foster an inclusive environment that respects and celebrates diversity. Think of me as a bridge builder, someone who has walked the challenging paths and knows how to navigate and unite various landscapes. My proposal includes strengthening mentorship programs. Divert, taking on the diversity gap head-on. And connecting students with role models from similar backgrounds and expanding access to technology. That prepare them for tomorrow's opportunities. I aim to implement policies that address not just the educational, but the emotional and social needs of our students. Ensuring a holistic approach to education. And with your support, I'm ready to tackle these issues head-on. Let's work together to turn our district into a model of success and inclusiveness. Where every child can look forward, look forward and towards the future with confidence and hope. Let's just not close the gaps, let's bridge them for good. Thank you for considering me for the Green Bay School Board, together we can make a profound difference. Let's make education the key to a better community, starting right here, right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I think we have a little time until our next candidate. That's prob, it's probably wise that we get on them, cause. Or no?
No one knows the schedule except the candidates, right?
I, I, no, no one knows the schedule. Um, I'll leave that to, uh, Florida, would you like to, um, keep going or do you wanna wait till the allotted time? Andrew?
I, I'd like to do, I'd like to do five minutes, but if we're able to start slightly early, that will help. Get us ahead, but I would like to do five after each one unless the whole thirty is used, that's me.
Okay.
We just don't wanna get so far ahead that people are feeling like we're rushing them, so yes, five minutes and then let's get.
All right. Then we're gonna take a five-minute break. Then we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, Kinsey. Yep, we're ready. Mister, Mister Perry, can you hear us? Mister Perry? Hello, can you hear us? I think you're muted.
There, can you hear me?
Yes, so now we can hear you.
There we go.
They are. Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I appreciate the opportunity.
Yep, we're going, um, we're going to, you're gonna have thirty minutes to make it through six questions. And we'll, each board member will ask you one question. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. No, he does not. We're gonna try to email you a copy of the questions.
Okay.
Okay. Just bear with us for a moment.
So we would start his time then, once he has the email.
Yeah, yeah, your time hasn't started yet. We're just gonna try to get those questions to you, because all the, all the candidates get a copy of the questions. At the time of their interview. Yeah, if there's time left over at the end, you will have, you'll, you'll have the remainder of your thirty minutes to make a statement if you'd like.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, the questions have been sent to you. Just let us know when you've received them.
I got him. I'm just trying to make them big here. Okay.
All right, all right, then we're gonna get started. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. My question is, please describe your understanding of the relationship between the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
My understanding is, is a symbiotic relationship, really a coexistence, so. Really having the, the school board having in a, in a visory type of relationship with the administration. Helping them, guide them through different decisions and issues that they may face throughout the year and. Really in different situations, and then from the administration's standpoint, coming to the school board with recommendations. You know, and, and different, and a. Really recommendations on how they can, how they feel. We could better the students and the community's experience. You know, overall, so it's really a, a coexistent or symbiotic relationship between the two and helping each other. Really navigate through the challenges that come with education within the community.
Next question.
What are the contributions you feel uniquely qualified to make to the leadership of the district?
Unique contributions, uniquely qualified. I would really say, I really, it starts with my military background. You know, and having that sense of service, really I've been in for twenty-two years. So I've gained the value of that, of service and how it can impact not only individuals, but a community and organization as well. And so just understanding what. You know, understanding how my unique position and decisions and perspective can help improve. Not only the, the community and the board, but. You know, the, the district overall.
Thank you. We're, we're taking notes, so just bear with us if there's a little bit of a pause.
Okay, um, please identify specific examples of situations in which you have demonstrated one or more of these important qualities. A, effective communication skills. B, leadership skills that have produced positive results. And C, collaboration skills you think would be effective on a seven-member board.
I'm gonna start with leadership skills. So I, in my. In my job with Schneider, I was a director of operations over a number of different operations around the country. And so I had to, really I had, I had KPIs and metrics that I had to adhere to. And really find ways to get my teams to become more productive. Not only financially, but for our customers as well. And so one of the things that I did was I took a step back at the structure of, of my team, my leadership team. And really understood that by changing certain aspects of that structure, centralizing it from a decentralized structure that it was in. Really would help produce some more effective results for the organization and for. You know, my teams as well and for the customers. And so I really had to have some tough conversations leading through that, that change management. With some of my leaders and, and get them, get the buy-in and get them on board. And understanding the change and the reason behind that change and the restructure that we had to do. Ultimately, it created much more better results for the customer. We expanded our, our growth with them. It improved our financial results as an organization as well. But again, it really, it took a lot of time and sensitive conversations to lead through that, that change management. The other, the other one that I would highlight too is, is communication skills. Now I know there's a lot of challenges that the board and the district faces, you know, within the community and budgetary. And so having effective communication skills is probably one of the, the top qualities that are needed. You know, to help navigate through those challenges. And so one of the, the other things that I had to lead through recently. Was, was a change in how we compensated our drivers as an organization. And it was a huge change for not only our drivers, but it was a change for our associates, the leaders of those drivers. And also the, the support, the support associates who helped support those drivers. It completely changed how we, we were gonna do business. And so being able to communicate what the change was to those associates and to the organization as a whole. Helping them communicate and understand the change to their drivers as well. To be able to, to effectively navigate through that, that change. So, you know, those, that would be probably the, the best example I'd have as, as far as the communication skills go. Really took, again, a lot of sensitive, a lot of sensitive conversations, understanding the impacts to those that, that. That we were talking to and the type of impact it was gonna have, whether it was positive or negative. And then walking them through, you know, how we were gonna help them through those, those different types of impacts. And then for collaborative, collaboration skills that I think would be effective, really is, is. I would say just the. The inclusiveness of, of ideas. So I'm really big on just. Understanding other, other people's perspectives, understanding ideas that they may have. How they, they may differ from mine and how we can use those ideas collectively to come to a, a positive and, and the best decision for the group and for, for the organization as a whole. You know, I had to do this as a, as a leader that. A non-direct leader of associates and, you know, senior leader of a collective group. Everybody had, again, through this change that we had, as far as the, the compensation goes, everybody had their own thoughts and opinions as to which direction we should go. Ultimately, I was in charge of, of the management of this project. But I wanted to really just understand everybody's thoughts. You know, how they felt that we could make the change and different, different things we may need, we may need to do to make it effective. Not only as a, as a leadership group, but as subgroups as well. And so just taking a lot of those ideas. Especially making everybody feel inclusive, because again, it helps with that buy-in. You know, and bringing those ideas into the project as a whole ultimately made it a success as well. Because again, everybody had, I felt like they had a part in, in the dramatic change that was, was going to happen.
Next is. What district challenges would you prioritize as a board member? And what are some possible ways you'd address them?
I think the. The top challenge that I would, that I would prioritize is just the, the community engagement. You know, and how we interact with, with the community, how they feel about the decisions that, that the board is. Is trying to navigate through and to make for the betterment of the community. Possible ways of addressing it, again, it's just, it's talking through it with the community openly and honest. Whether it's within board meetings or it's outside of, of board meetings and just different events and making myself available. To help them again, understand, to get their, help them feel like their voices are being heard. And help them understand, you know, just the different perspectives and what's going into a lot of decisions that are being made. For the district. I, I think the, the, the second challenge obviously would, would. Be the financial challenge that, that the district is, is facing. In ways to helping addresses, just understanding. Understanding what avenues that can be taken to help close that gap. You know, what, what things haven't we thought of? What ideas are out in the community that, that they may have that will help. Will help the financial situation that they're, that we're in and helping to close that, that gap as well. Really just trying to get a diversity of, of ideas. To come to the best decisions and plans that could be made to help move the, the district forward.
Thank you.
As a school board member, what are some specific ways you will advocate for the district's schools, students, and public education in Wisconsin?
Different ways to advocate for the, the schools really is, is through, I don't like, you know, speaking with government officials, whether it's the, with the city or it's with the state, it's with the Congress. You know, any way that I can ensure that, you know, we get our voices heard of what's needed at the schools. You know, how we can, how they can help better the. The environment that we're in, whether it is. Uh, the environment uh that we're in, uh whether it is financially or whether it's um specifically with um some of the educational standards. Uh, but really just uh, you know, reaching out to those uh those officials at all levels um and making sure that they um understand the challenges that are being faced uh within uh, you know, Green Bay and within the the community itself.
Why are you applying to join the board?
Um, it's a, you know, for me, I I've served in the military for, again, for twenty-two years. Um, and what I've, what I've learned and and grown to appreciate is is just the um the impact that service has, not only on uh an individual, um but seeing that impact um on others, on the community, um on organizations um and and on the country as a whole. Um, and really, that's why I continue to serve is is the appreciation that um that service brings. Um, and so when I, when I saw this opportunity, it it presented another opportunity to serve um and to impact the community around me that um, you know, that helps shapes my kids' future. Um. You know, being able to um not only impact individuals within the district, um, you know, the future of of um our community, the kids, uh, but also the parents and the teachers, um just being able to have that positive impact um coming from a different perspective um and trying to um bring, you know, my background um and my perspective again to this group um to help uh move, make positive change, you know, and move the the district forward. Um, so it's really a, it starts with just a sense of service. Um, doing what I can to help um serve my community um as much as I can and and bringing the um, the background that I have um to the best of my abilities.
Okay, that completes our questions. Um, you do have some time if you have anything else you'd like to share. Um, a s- a closing statement, um, anything else you'd like us to know?
Um, well, well, again, I I appreciate the the time and the opportunity. Um, I know there's a lot of, a lot of great uh candidates and and folks that are um, you know, that that applied for the board as well. Um, I would just say, you know, I I, again, I feel like um. The 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 background that I have um both on the military side um as well as uh in the private sector and working for Schneider for um the last thirteen years now. Um, from the bottom up uh as a driver and then going through and making my way um up as a director um of operations, having a a tactical and a strategic um perspective um and understanding um of some of the challenges that uh faces an organization. Again, it's, it's, you know, understanding some of the challenges that that the board faces and bringing that perspective, bringing that background. Um, I I feel like I would be um well-suited to to help fill that seat. Um, you know, and help navigate through some of the challenges that that we continue to face.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all. I I appreciate the time. Um, apologies, I couldn't be there. Uh, I did have a a service this week.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for joining us. Um, that completes our our time with you, and um, thank you for applying.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, um. Um, honestly, this is going much faster than I anticipated. Uh, so we're going to have a little bit of gap here again, another another break um while we uh wait for our next candidate. So, everyone, take five.
Yeah, so nothing wrong is being said here, but we are, I understand is we are, we are still live streaming on the break. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew the same thing that I did, but every, I mean, yeah, okay, just make sure.
And that director, that conductor, oh God, was she just perfect for the job. I loved it. Oh, and then they met in high school, and now they are performing, they write their own music. It was just wonderful.
Is he's here?
Are you ready to get going? Okay, all right. Yes, absolutely. Yep, right there. Hello? Greetings. We're going to um ask you six questions. All the candidates got the same questions. Um, there's a copy in there uh if you'd like to have a look. Um, each board member is gonna take uh turns um asking you one question, and you'll have thirty minutes to answer. If there's time left over at the end, um, you can make a statement or share anything you'd like at that point. So we're just gonna get started. Okay, so go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Um, please describe your understanding of the relationship between the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
On my understanding, did you have to keep this pressed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, my understanding of the relationship between the school board's role and the administration's role is um, the school board is there to ensure that um first and foremost that the kids are getting the best education that they can. That they also are supporting um their teachers, students, and family. Um, and then I would imagine that they work hand in hand with the administration um to make sure that they're both on the same page while also holding each other accountable. To again, make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our students, families, and educators.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. We're taking notes, so there might be a bit of a pause here. What are the contributions you feel uniquely qualified to make to the leadership of the district?
Well, I think um what I have a unique perspective is, is that I work with children on a daily basis. Um, in my career, I am the uh BYA Wisconsin Community Coordinator at WEARI's African American Resource Center. Um, so I run an after-school program four days of the week. Um, during the school year, I work nine to seven. And during the summer, um we run summer programming Monday through Friday, nine to five. So I have advocated and been in the majority of the Green Bay schools. I've been in Franklin, Washington, East High School, West High School. I've been a part of IEP processes. Um, I've been a part of um legal proceedings with youths in courtrooms and judges' chambers. So doing this work has been the most rewarding thing that I've done in my life outside of being a father myself and finding my partner. And I think that having that background and also working on several committees and task forces geared towards um, the education process in the town. Um, I think that gives me a unique perspective because it's something that I already do. Um, I am the son of an educator. My mother was a teacher for twenty-five years. She taught children with learning disabilities. Um, she worked at Miguel A. Nunez Middle School in Waukegan, Illinois. Um, my aunt is a teacher. Uh, my aunt also runs in uh the Boys and Girls Club, and my sister is a parent liaison at the Waukegan Public School System. So education and working for your community has always been in my blood. And I think that um it would just be a continuation of the things that I'm already doing.
Thank you. Next question, so please identify specific examples of situations in which you have demonstrated one or more of these important qualities. A, effective communication skills. B, leadership skills that have produced positive results. Or C, collaboration skills you think would be effective on a seven-member board.
Um, this past Saturday, in partnership with Wisconsin Health Literacy, um, we put on a mental health workshop that we have taught our children in our youth group to facilitate. Um, so we taught them how to facilitate and teach um mental health awareness and mental health resources to their peers. Um, and that takes effective communication to be able to get the information to our children so that they can put it back out to the people of their community effectively. Um, it also shows our partnership, um, excuse me, it shows collaboration because we work with Wisconsin Health Literacy to apply for the grant and put together the curriculum and the workbook together that we teach back to facilitation. Um, excuse me, teach the children how to facilitate. Um, and I believe that that also shows leadership skills, uh because part of leading is listening. Um, and in order to make those guides work, we had to take the input from our young people, the things they struggle with mental health-wise. Um, and I believe that demonstrates all three of those qualities.
Okay, um. Number four is, what district challenges would you prioritize as a board member? And what are some possible ways you'd address them?
Um, a couple of challenges. I understand that um enrollment is declining. Um, also, there's uh budget issues, um as, because I know that the referendum is still on the horizon. Um, also, in my work with Achieve Brown County and the reading success, and I understand that reading scores are still not what we might necessarily want them to be. Um, one of the things that I first noticed when I started working with young people in this area that some of the kids that I work with are not confident readers. Um, so those would be things that I would like to address. Um. How we address those, first and foremost, I always believe that the people closest to any situation have the solution. So that would be by um talking with the children, um their families, as well as the teachers. So that would be by talking with the children, their families, as well as the teachers, to see what they see and to try to have them convey what they're going through, what is impeding their reading levels, and also what is impeding or causing the decline in enrollment, what's making it difficult to keep people in certain schools in certain parts of the city. As far as the budget goes, that would be something that I would have to learn about just from being an outsider, being at the referendum meetings. You guys showed us examples and demographics of what happens, but that's something that I would have to learn, but I feel like that would be a major thing that we would wanna take care of. Because it seems like those issues could continue if not addressed and figuring out a way to make the budget work for everybody so that we don't have to cut a bunch of schools, even if we do, just to make sure that it's done the most fiscal responsible way, and also in the, I would say the most compassionate way if people have to move from places that they've already known. In schools, it gives you a sense of community, a sense of belonging to a neighborhood. So those are the things that I would address.
As a school board member, what are some specific ways you will advocate for the districts, schools, students, and public education in Wisconsin?
I think first and foremost, what I would like to do, given the opportunity, is to go to the schools and just observe, be able to talk to kids, listen to them, and figure out how their experiences are in the schools as well as talk to the educators. A lot of times when we're here, or I've been here, one of the last things people bring up is the actual teachers. We are talking about the kids, which is supposed to be our number one priority, so that makes a lot of sense to me. But being the son of a teacher and as far back as when I was sixteen, I remember my mother talking to me about all the barriers she had to get through before she could educate, whether it's a hungry child or a child might be homeless, might be a DV situation or something like that. So I would like to do or put more focus on, and maybe you guys do, so I don't mean to say that you don't, if you have, making sure that we support our teachers to the fullest as well as the children. I think those things go hand in hand. But in my job, part of my job is to advocate for families and children, so I would take the same approach that I do, which is first, listen and assess the situation, put together a checklist or goals of how we want to do that, make sure that we're being realistic in our goal planning and how we expect to do those things, and then implement that plan all the while, making sure that communication is key and number one in that we're being transparent with the public, how we choose to go about that.
Why are you applying to join the board?
I'm applying to join the board because, as I said before, I've been in this chamber numerous times over the last couple of years. And typically, I'm the only person that looks like me here as like in the public, sometimes in these meetings. And just having the unique perspective that I have from doing the work that I've done, I have a servant's heart, and whatever I can do to support the community and make it an extension of the work that I already do, supporting children, supporting their families, and supporting educators, I am willing to do. I am by no means perfect, but I have a hunger to learn and continue my education. The three greatest teachers that I've had in my life were my mother, becoming a father, finding my person, and working with the kids that I work now. It's been the most rewarding thing that I have ever done outside of those previous things that I mentioned. And if I can continue that and help out in any way that I can, I'm willing to do so and eager to do so.
Okay, that completes our questions, but we have plenty of time for you to make a statement or offer anything else that you'd like to.
I'll just, first off, wanna thank you guys for having me and giving me this opportunity. I have great respect for education and educators and the administrative process that you guys have to go through. It is not an easy job, but I do feel like I would be a good candidate to this team. I will look at it again as I do everything in my life as an opportunity to learn, serve, and grow. So I've given that opportunity. It would mean a great deal to me. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Alright, then that completes our time with you. Thank you very much for applying. Thanks, yep. Oh, yep, leave the questions. Yep, thank you. Yep. Okay. Alright, we are way about ahead of schedule, so yeah, Brian. Yeah, Brian is always available for helping us write haikus, so.
We'll, we'll take at least five, and then if the candidate arrives early, we'll discuss. But I'll take at least five.
Yeah, at least five. Remember, we're streaming, and keep your microphones on. Unexpectedly ahead of schedule, and so that's why we brought you in early. Yes.
Recognizing that we have some members of the audience that have been here for the whole time, can we just wait until they return? So give them a minute or two. I noticed that some of the presses left, and I assume are coming back.
Okay. If you don't mind, we're just gonna give it a moment. There is a copy of the questions in front of you that for your to have a look at. They'll need to stay there when you're done, but they're there to help you. You'll get thirty minutes. Everybody gets thirty minutes. There'll be six questions. We're each gonna ask you one question. And at the end, if there's time, you can make a statement. You can offer up any other information you think that might, we might need to know. So. Alright. Okay, then we're gonna, we're gonna get started, so. Okay, we'll start with Brian.
Please describe your understanding of the relationship between the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
We probably should have told you, yep, there you go.
Okay, there we go. As I understand it, the school board is accountable for policy and strategy and a vision with goals and objectives and measures of success and or failure. The superintendent is the sole person that reports to the school board, as I understand it. And then the superintendent and the administration run the district day to day, the day-to-day operations. That sounds easy in theory. In practice, I'm sure there's some gray area and dotted lines and lateral communication that tend to challenge the workings. I know that there is there's always a question about just how operational or tactical, I'm a soldier, so I think in those terms, that the, in this case, this body is involved in those things. And sometimes there is a gray area, but through, I guess, through communication, through understanding, collaboration really is more than, more so than anything else. Those things can be ironed out. I can see where if those lines aren't, aren't clear and clean, there could be confusion about who's in charge, and should I take this guidance from this individual knowing that that person is not directly in my leadership chain? So those kind of things are things that, that, that the district, the school board, the superintendent, and, and the administration all have to make sure that they're all in sync with the message. That actually comes, you can, you can make that clear through a linkage between the vision and the strategy and the goals and end state, all the way to the person executing the day-to-day. Is anything that that person does or can, does it tie to the mission? If they don't even know what the mission is, then there's some work that has to be done to close those kind of information gaps.
What are the contributions you feel uniquely qualified to make to the leadership of this district?
Well, I have a executive leadership background. And for me, I, what I bring to the table is a very rapid assimilation into this group, this team, to help move things forward that are critical and a priority to the school district and to the school board. I'm an executive, I've, I've operated at that level for a number of years. My last role was chief operating officer for a mid-sized trucking and logistics company. I have served in the military. I'm a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel. I have functioned at the brigade, battalion, corps, echelons above corps, and at the national level. I've served on boards, and I've, I'm currently functioning or working with the University of Wisconsin's business school as their, as part of their Business Advisory Council. In fact, I helped draft their, their diversity statement for their university. In fact, the very first sentence in there, I'm proud to say that, that I coined it. It says, diversity is not some of us. Diversity is the sum of all of us. And so I'm very proud to, to be contributing at that level. I understand the challenges of leadership by committee. It is sometimes cumbersome, but it's, that's by design, and that's to keep any one person or one entity from usurping or making unilateral decisions and, and moving things in a direction that is in somebody else's personal interest. It's a check and balance, and so I understand the workings of that. And so I know that coming into or onto this board, if I am so honored to do so, there's a, there's an implied requirement to collaborate and, and not go off on my own somewhere and, and, and start driving things with, without the sanction of this board. So I understand that. That would be my function if I were on this board. I hope that answered your question.
Okay, next question. Please identify specific examples of situations in which you have demonstrated one or more of these important qualities. Effective communication skills, leadership skills that have produced positive results, and collaboration skills you think would be effective on a seven-member board.
Figure that out. Communication is the foundation of everything. If we can't interact and communicate and make sure that we are understood, and also if we are not sure of how we are being received, then we have a problem. And so for me, communication is, is key to everything. I've got a lot of examples of, of, again, communicating my intent. My, my, the way that I, I view effective communication is to step outside of myself and, and see how I'm being perceived by other folks. That's, that's, that's a hard thing to do, especially if you're tied up in yourself, in, in your own objectives and agendas. But the ability to say, okay, how am I being received by this person? And that's seeking feedback. But the ability to say, okay, how am I being received by this person? And that's seeking feedback and paraphrasing. Okay, help, let's make sure that you heard what I said, so tell me what I just told you. And, and for me, that's, that's a really effective method to make sure that it's being understood. Not only just the wording and the, and the letter, but also the spirit of the intent has to be understood. So that as soon as you walk away in the absence of any specific instructions, the everybody knows what generally is the direction that we want to go. And, and, and everybody understands, you know, the, the guidelines that are set there. They understand the definition of success, but equally is important, they understand the definition of failure and the consequence of failure. And I always tell people, you'll know before I know whether or not you're failing at your mission, you're part of this plan. You'll see, excuse me, you'll see it coming long before I do. So you've got first opportunity to fix whatever the issue is before I find out. And, and once I find out, then we're, we're gonna have those kinds of communication to, to put it back on track to make sure that it's going in the direction that it needs to go. And everybody should understand that going forward.
All right. Question four. What district challenges would you prioritize as a board member? And what are some possible ways you'd address them?
Okay. Well, me prioritizing them would be kind of secondary to what the board has as a priority. My, what I, and I've done a lot of studying and research about what the issues are. I understand them to be. And I'll preface this by saying that I'm learning about this whole endeavor called a public school initiative or, and just all this going on. But I'm very familiar with the, the components that challenge a large body and groups of people. For example, the budget. If we are spending more than we are making and bringing in, then there is an issue and a concern. And I've heard some conversation around the budget. I understand about balance sheets and budgeting. I have put budget plans together for large, very large organizations. And, 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 and I know how to make sure that we are spending what we bring in and/or we're figuring out ways to generate more revenue and more things in. I, I look at the, I've looked at the district's report card for last year and their results. I would see that as a concern, but again, my question to the board members would be, is the board, is the school district satisfied with those results? When I see where in some cases twenty to thirty percent are achieving standards that are above the average, only twenty percent. For me, the question is, that doesn't feel good to me. And so my question is, is that, is everybody okay with that? And, and if we're not, then what are we doing specifically to address those shortfalls? I am concerned that that there, there might be some, there's, there's the beginnings of backlash happening with this whole conversation of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because A, it's, it's tough to do because it requires a change in thinking about the fact that we're, we're trying to make sure that we are properly representing everybody that lives in this neighborhood. And so that takes work. And it's easy to, 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 you know, I, I see diversity as sitting, sitting along a spectrum of, of intensity, all the way from lip service of putting or, and, and doing tokenism to the other end of it to saying, okay, there's, there's full engagement by everybody. There's full representation. There's full awareness of what's going on. There is any bias, any prejudging, any type of thing that smacks of exclusion is rapidly dealt with and addressed so that we can all move forward and move on and that we're not burdened by these distractions. So that, that would be a priority. The school closures and the boundaries, redrawing those. I've looked at those two options, A and B. I've heard discussion now possible of a C version out there maybe. But I've been involved in making very tough decisions about closing critical structure, the critical components of large, very large organizations. I was involved in, with the base realignment enclosure and when I was in the military with a couple of companies that I've worked for, we've had to make, we've had to shut down or operations, one of which that I know of was a very emotional conversation to have with a, with an entire community in Alabama that closed that or, that operation down and affected the entire community's financial status. So I, I understand how to do it. I've been there. I know how to have those kind of conversations. And I understand the, how to weigh the pros and cons of courses of action. I'm a big decision matrix kind of person. I like looking at that kind of stuff and literally turn it into a math problem to figure out what makes the best solution for us all. And then communicating those decisions and including everybody who has a stake in this so that they have some ownership in that solution and that something's not just imposed upon them. Probably giving you longer answers than your, but other challenges that I'm hearing, this is just the community school. Should there be an expansion of that, of those type of schools? The charter schools and, and how they are functioning and, and whether or not there should be more of that or less of that. I don't know. Teacher morale and perceptions versus reality. And is there a gap between how our teachers are feeling about their place in this wonderful school district? I, I have heard that Green Bay is, 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 is considered the most diverse school district in the state of Wisconsin. That to me should be something to celebrate and the teachers. You know, and so to compare this district to other districts in this area, they should be looking to this district at, for, hey, how are you guys doing this? How are, how is this, this district making it how it'll happen? And the teacher should be very excited about this. Student motivation. This is a giant question that I have in my mind is how engaged are all of the students in the student body? We know that the, the top performers are going to do great. We, we got that. How are the ones in the middle and how are the ones that are, are, are not there? Are we putting the requisite amount of energy and effort towards those students? And are we getting feedback from those students as to how they feel this school district is doing and? Think I've hit the ones that. Thank you.
As a school board member, what are some specific ways you will advocate for the district's schools, students, and public education in Wisconsin?
Do a lot of listening. Less talking. And understand, again, the connection to this mission, which to me, I, I like this mission statement. Community ready, career ready, college ready. That should be some definition behind each one of those meanings and then it should translate to everybody and then advocate for that. And then every student should say, yeah, I get that. I understand my place in this whole thing. At the end of my twelfth year, am I ready to step out into this world? So for me, the advocacy is, how do you feel about you, your place in this? Where, do you see any issues with you achieving this objective? This is talking to a student, for example. And then truly helping them understand and appreciate the importance of the effort that is being put towards their education. The, the schools. Forty-two schools in the district, four high schools. My mission is to get out as much as I can and, and interact with those, with those members of that, of those respective schools, the principals, the teachers, the administration, to, to hear things from their perspective. The I'm just looking at the question again. And then public education in Wisconsin overall, how we compare to, see, there's, and again, I'm looking at that, at the report card specifically. And it shows where Green Bay area school, public school sits in relation to the other schools in the state. Are we satisfied with, with that positioning? And if not, what are we doing to move forward? I understand meets expectations is where we currently sit. I'm personally never satisfied with meets expectations because I'm always one that says, okay, whatever we've achieved, how can we make this good thing even better? I think we got a wonderful story to tell. There's nothing that has to be created from scratch here. There's, there's things that are in place. The question is, are they connected? And are they all moving in the same direction towards that common goal and objective? That's the neat thing about it. So coming on board here, I, I don't see the need to, to, to do anything from scratch. I've been there before. That, that doesn't seem to be the mission here. The mission is how to move this thing forward to its desired objectives and then achieve a steady state as the community evolves and matures and grows and, and nothing stays the same. I mean, you can see it with the demographics. This, this place has changed and it will continue to change. And our, and we should, we should be an example of how to embrace that change.
Why are you applying to join the board?
Well, I think everything that I've said up to this point would, would explain that. I'm excited. To me, this, this is gonna be fun. And if we're not having fun, if it's drudgery walking up these three flights of stairs, then I, I, it's not something that I would, would want to do. I, I see this as an opportunity to, to give back. It to me seems like a culmination of a lot of experience that I've gained. Like I said, I can, I can do all of the things that I know a board knows how to do and is supposed to do. So the learning curve on that is, wouldn't have to be that steep. The steepness of the learning is going to be in doing the work of advancing the board's agenda and the, and the board's strategy and its mission and its objectives. That is where the energy that I know I can bring to the table. I know what, and I, to me, I've always thought that good leaders don't have all the answers. In fact, I don't ever want to be the smartest person in the room. I want to be the person that knows that you know what you're supposed to be doing. And I know what questions to ask that gets to the, to the root cause, excuse me, to the root cause of whatever the issues are and keep digging. And then if the best answer that somebody gives me is, well, that's the way we've always done it, then that's not sufficient because we're gonna keep digging until we, we all get there. And then I'm gonna help whoever is in this understand their part to play in this thing so that we can move things forward.
Okay, um, that completes, how we doing on time, Laurie? Okay, that completes our questions. And so you have ten minutes to talk.
I'm for brevity, so. The, 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 the questions, and, and again, thank you for, first of all, the opportunity. I understand there were, there were a lot of very qualified folks that, that tried. I, I've interviewed hundreds of people and I've looked at thousands of resumes, so. And, and I've anticipated what questions would I ask someone sitting in this position? And so, and, and, and so none of the questions actually surprised me. Uh-oh, I think I stole your question here again. Are we satisfied? I guess this is the question for the board. Am I allowed to ask?
Sorry.
Oh, okay. All right.
We can't answer, but you can ask.
Well, these are the questions that if I were so honored to be a part of the board, that I will ask. Are we satisfied with, with where we are? And, and, and is there, is there energy and commitment to move things and advance things and make things better than, than where we currently are? I'm a, as a strategic thinker, I, I tend to think with the end in mind and then we backward plan to where we currently are. And that backward planning process becomes our roadmap to get us there. And then there's checkpoints along the way to make sure that we are on track and that the vision is still the vision. I, questions that I will ask or would ask, the relationship between city and county governments and adjacent school districts. What is our relationship? How do we interact? How do best practices get shared amongst all of us? Because we're all about helping our children move forward and they move between districts and what have you. How would you classify our relationship with the media? And is our communication of who and what we are as, as crisp and clean and unified as it needs to be? These are the things, the relationship with the teachers, and I spoke of that. Students and family member participation. Are we, is everybody being held accountable for the results in a way that is productive and not destructive? So I'll, I'll, I'll leave it there. Again, just thank you for the opportunity to, to hopefully serve and be a part of this board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, leave the questions. Thank you very much. So we're gonna take another five minutes, folks. And, and our next is scheduled for seven thirty, so. Is she here? Okay. Take five minutes. Yeah, take five minutes. Yes. Yes. So the interview will be 30 minutes. You'll have 30 minutes. Uh, we have six questions. Um, we'll each take a turn asking a question. What am I forgetting? Am I forgetting anything? Oh, if there's time at the end and it's turning out that actually this is going much quicker than we thought, you, you can make a statement or, um, add any information that you think is relevant. So, so we're gonna, uh, and then when you're done, leave, leave the questions there. So, uh, we're just gonna get started. You're good? Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Please describe your understanding of the relationship between the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
Nope, just hit it. Yep, there you go.
Um, the school board is the one who ensures that the district is being well-run through the policies that are being enforced and the community input, while the administration is the one to actually run the district. Um, some of the roles may overlap, but ideally you would want to be under the same goal, the same mission statement and working together, um, to make sure that everything is running smoothly.
Okay. Good.
What are the contributions you feel uniquely qualified to make to the leadership of the district?
I think I have a unique perspective, um, being one of the younger candidates for the board. Um, I feel like it's a voice that hasn't necessarily been heard. Um, and just going through what I have went through this year, living through firsthand one of the school closings, I think I understand what parents and families would like to understand throughout the process. Um, I'm still in the middle of the process, so I think, um, there's a lot to learn still. And I feel like that could be helpful, um, as a board member. I am also currently on the PTO at Wequioq. Um, so I work well under the leadership sense and working with the schools and the kids and the teachers. Um, so connecting it that way. Um, I also work in marketing, so I feel like I have a strong marketing background. I know there was a lot of schools that I felt were not marketed necessarily to the community as best as they could have been. Um, and so I have ideas on, on how I could help share that with, with the district and the administration. Um, but ultimately I feel like, like I do have a, a voice that's missing on this board. I understand there's, there's representatives from the schools. Um, but I feel like having a, a first grader and a preschooler, there's a lot of room, um, for them to grow in the schools and I want to see that, that that is done.
Okay. Next.
Hey, please identify specific examples of situations in which you have demonstrated one or more of these important qualities. Effective communication skills, leadership skills that have produced positive results, collaboration skills you think would be effective on a seven-member board.
Well, going back to what my kindergarten teacher said, she said that I would be one of, I would be harder on myself than anyone ever would be. And I think I've embodied that throughout everything that I've done. I, I mean, I was our valedictorian and our class president in high school. And I think I've just continued taking on leadership roles to see results that, um, that helped the community, that helped my family, that helped my children. So I feel like this year when I took on, um, unknowingly took on the Wequioq representative for the voice of our school and the families in the community, um, that was a lot of effective communication, understanding what the families needed, what they wanted to see. There were a lot of families that didn't want to show up here. They didn't want to have their voices heard. So I, um, took it upon myself to effectively communicate their needs to the board through data and presentations so that it wasn't, um, so that it was understandable to everyone that, that was viewing it. And the leadership skills, I think today still, I, I still walk out in our community and people thank me for being a voice for, for the community, for the schools, for the kids. And I think that that, that really made me feel like I had a positive impact on it that way. And the collaboration skills, it goes back to just relaying the information and, um, the data that I was finding from families in the community. And I think that's really what the board embodies is community input. Um, and that's essentially what I was doing by, by communicating with our community and bringing it back to the board. And I think that's an important skill to have to be on this seven-member board.
Okay. Four. What district challenges would you prioritize as a board member? And what are some possible ways that you've addressed them?
The first and foremost would be trust within the community. I think that was a big one we saw this year. Just making sure that teach, the trust, the families, students, community members. Um, I know at the opening of school, there was the welcome back school event and that I felt was very, very welcoming to families and we felt heard. Um, and I think that that, that is a big one. I, I don't want to just send out surveys and feel that parents are being heard only through surveys. I want events in the community, um, to regain that trust and, and show that, that, that everybody cares and that everybody is listening, not just through numbers and surveys. Um, and the second one I think would be the enrollment. That one has been a huge one, I know, that affected me directly, which is part of the reason why I felt so strongly to run for the board. One in four of students or one in four seats are empty right now. And that, I think, I think that could be fixed with a lot of different, different things that may have been overlooked in the past. Um, whether that's through marketing, I know when I moved here, I happened to stumble upon the Wequioq sustainability curriculum randomly. Um, and I know there were a lot of other schools I had never heard of and specialties that they had provided. In other cities, um, there's been, you know, programs that have wait lists of a hundred people or more for different programs that we offer in this community. And I think that that really needs to be addressed, which would also help the, the budget that we need to come up with in order to keep moving forward.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, as a school board member, what are some specific ways you will advocate for the district's schools, students and public education in Wisconsin?
I feel like this is something that I'm already doing through the outreach that I've done through our community, um, interacting with a lot of the other teachers and students at the other schools. I think I hear what their voices need. Um, and I want to give them platforms to bring that back to the board so that we know what, what it is they want to see from us, um, bring that trust back. I think just working what I've done with our school this year. Um, bringing, bringing happy events to our school in the midst of closing and, you know, sharing, sharing things about the other schools that, um, that, that families or other, other schools or other places don't necessarily know. I think there's a lot of people right now moving to this area of Green Bay. Um, with climate change, there's, there's people coming in. And I think that we need to advocate for all the programs that we provide because I know there are a lot of great programs in the school district. And I don't think that they're all, um, they're all well-known. And I think that, um, that I, that would help bring people in and keep them here.
Okay.
Why are you applying to join the school board?
Like I said before, I guess I feel like I'm, I'm, I would be unique in that I would be a younger voice to be heard. Some of the younger families. Um, I know one of the members of the school board said, this is our one time to make a change with the boundaries that are being redrawn, with the schools that are being closed, the new programs. And I feel like I have what it takes to make a change and help with that and be something that can be an example for other schools. We have, you know, we have a great, um, program to try to reduce the carbon footprint now. And I think that that's something that is a big priority and can be something that we can share with other school districts. Um, and we can, we can make a change not only here in Green Bay, but also, you know, across the United States. I'd also like to read my statement.
Um, okay, we're finished with all the questions, so, and there's plenty of time, so go ahead.
I stand here as a member of the Green Bay school community and a passionate advocate for our children. My daughter is currently attending Oak Learning, a Green Bay public school nature-based 4K program. And my son is a first grader at Wequioq Elementary. I come here today with a unique perspective that I believe will be valuable not only to this board, but our diverse community. As a parent of young kids myself, I understand firsthand the needs and concerns of parents in our community. I've experienced the joy of sending my child after school each day and hearing about the exciting things they are learning, as well as the heartache of having to navigate the closure of our school. I understand hard decisions will need to be made in the future and more schools may have to close. But I also understand the emotions that come with such decisions. I am committed to ensuring that every parent in our community feels heard and supported during this process. And I am passionate about ensuring that communities are kept together, fostering unity and inclusivity in our educational system. Beyond my personal experiences, I also bring to the table a wealth of professional expertise in marketing. I believe that our schools are the heart of our community and I am passionate about showcasing all of the wonderful things they do. I feel that if more of this was done, it could have saved some of our schools from the risk of closure. From academic achievements to extracurricular activities and programs, I want to ensure that each school in our district is highlighted for how it helps our community. By showcasing the incredible work being done in our schools, we can inspire confidence and pride in our educational system and bring, bring back the trust in Green Bay public schools. Finally, I am very committed to the idea of sustainability. As a steward of our planet, I believe it's our responsibility to ensure that our schools are not only providing a quality education, but also operating in an environmentally conscious manner. As a member of the Green Bay Schools Advisory Committee on Clean Energy, I want to work with the schools and our staff to implement sustainable practices in our schools from reducing waste to promoting energy efficiency. By making our schools more sustainable, we can teach our students valuable lessons about conservation and responsibility while also setting a positive example for our community. In conclusion, I believe firsthand that my experience as a parent, coupled, coupled with my professional experience in marketing and my commitment to sustainability make me an ideal candidate for the Green Bay School Board. I will advocate for the concerns of all parents affected by the closure of community schools. Utilizing data rather than personal opinions, I'm committed to making informed decisions and ensuring that our community receives comprehensive, timely and accurate information. I'm passionate about our schools and dedicated to ensuring that every student receives the best possible education. I would be honored to serve on this board and work alongside each of you to make a positive difference in the lives of our students and our community. Thank you.
Okay. That completes our time with you. Thank you so much for applying and for coming to, um, share more with us tonight. And, um, that, that's it for now. All right. Thank you. Yep, leave the questions behind. Don't, don't worry, you're not the only. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Right, all right. Thank you, Leah. Okay, um, so is, is, um, the next candidate is ready to go? Okay, then we're going to, again, take five. Have you all taken a moment to look at our policy, how policy? How, how the, the voting on this is, um? Okay, so it's policy 133. Um, there's a policy and a rule, and that gives a very definitive step-by-step kind of how this, how this will go once we've heard from everybody. Oh.
We should just run through it.
Yeah. I've got it, I've got it. What's that? Hello, are you there? Is all right, I, can you hear us? I, I think you're on mute. Hello, can you hear us? Can you unmute yourself? Oh. Hello, can you hear us?
Oh, there we go.
There you are. There you are.
So weird.
Okay, so can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome. We're going to, there are six questions. Can, um, she, we, we've just emailed you the list of the questions so that you can see them as you're, well, as you're answering them. You have thirty minutes. And all the candidates got the same questions and the same thirty minutes. And each board member is going to take turns asking you one question.
Okay.
At the end, if you, if there's extra time, you can make a statement or offer any more information that you might like to, you know, let us know about. And if you're comfortable, we, we can go ahead and get started. Oh, yeah. Have you received the questions yet?
Yep, I've got them.
Very good. All right, then we're gonna get started. Go ahead, Brian.
Please describe your understanding of the relationship between the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
So my understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district is that the school board serves almost like an advisory role, but also implements some policies with regard to budget and districting lines. That's my understanding of it.
We're taking notes, so there might be a little pause between questions.
Okay.
Are they ready? Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay. What are the contributions you feel uniquely qualified to make to the leadership of?
This is a really good question. So I have been a product of the Green Bay Public School District from the beginning. So I went to Dan's Elementary, then I went to Aldo Leopold, then I went to the Green Bay, Green Bay East High. And then I went to UWGB. Throughout that time, I was I was definitely aware that the school district was growing in terms of the diversity, but I didn't really understand what that meant. As I went on for further education, I feel like something that distinguishes me from other people is that I am willing to accept that my point of view or my perception of things may not be, I guess, the most important thing in the room. And I'm willing to put myself back and willing to listen to different ideas openly, and that's something that I actively work towards. I don't want to be, I guess, stuck in the same route and in the same way. And I, I welcome discussions, I welcome different points of view. And honestly, I love, I love a good challenge, and I'm always, I'm always ready for a good challenge, and I think that's what I think that's what makes me uniquely qualified. Plus, I love talking to people, so that's that, too.
Okay. One second. Now, please identify specific examples of situations in which you have demonstrated one or more of these important qualities. Effective communication skills, leadership skills that have produced positive results, collaboration skills you think would be effective on a seven-member board.
Yes, okay. Can I hit on each one? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right, cool. Okay, so effective communication skills. So I am a musician and entertainer by trade. But I'm also, or I guess I, I used to teach private piano lessons, and in order to be a really good teacher, you have to have good communication skills. Because if your student doesn't understand a concept in the first way that you explained it, then it's your job as a teacher to find a second way. And if they don't understand that way, then you have to find the third way. So that's your job as a teacher, is to be able to bring to the table for the kids different ways of explaining the same thing. And so I was able to explain to one of my students that is older now the difference between a major chord and a minor chord. And so at first glance, they, or at first listen, I should say, they were a little confused, like, what's the difference between a major chord and a minor chord? That's not something a lot of people actually, like, really listen to. And so I tried to explain it to him, you know, this is how you build it, you know, it's a major third and a minor third, or a minor third and major third. But then I thought, okay, he's eight years old, let's take a look at where he is right now. And then I thought, okay, I'm gonna play this chord, and you tell me if it sounds happy or if it sounds sad. And then he said, well, that sounds happy. And I'm like, okay, that's major. So then I do a couple more of those. And then I said, okay, and then I introduce a minor, and I'm like, okay, does it sound happy or sad? And then he's like, well, that sounds different. I think that sounds sad. I'm like, exactly. So like, for a musician, you have to be really cognizant of the harmonic structure, and I think it's important for kids to learn that at an early age. And so if I would have kept explaining it to him in terms of like, the actual structure and the intervallic relationship between each note, that's not gonna work for him. So I was like, okay, let me work and find a different way so that I can help him understand this concept. That's really important for a musician to understand. Okay, so that's A. Leadership skills that have produced positive results. Okay. Um, so being in Green Bay East High School was so awesome because in the music department, the teachers really cared about the students being independent. So when I was going to Green Bay East High School, my friend Kristen Fluger and I, we formed the Young Women's Choir. And so that carried on throughout our entire year. So we formed that, I think we formed that our sophomore year. And so what we did is we took music from Bulgaria, and we taught it to our peers. Mind you, we're all sophomores and freshmen, and even actually some seniors and juniors. We taught this Bulgarian music to our peers because it, it used a different type of tonality and nasal tonality that is not commonly used in Western music. And we also were singing in a different language. And it was just, it was just such a good experience for that, and being able to work with not only my peers, but also our teachers letting us have those sort of, sort of leadership skills. That also translated to me teaching vocal jazz at UWGB as kind of like a teaching assistant to Dr. John Salerno. So from that start in Green Bay East High School, with that support that we had, I was able to take those leadership skills and put that into arranging a piece that I wrote for, for the choirs, the Vocal Jazz Choirs at UWGB, teaching it to the Vocal Jazz, and then ultimately performing it. And they did, they did really well, and I think that, I think, I think it was, it was a good, a good result. Okay, let's be collaboration skills you think would be effective on a seven-member board. Like I said in the beginning, I think collaboration really, it really, really, really depends on you not thinking that you are right all of the time. It's the same thing, it's the same thing with music, and I, and I believe that, I believe that with art, I believe that in business, you have to think about the greater purpose, the greater good. What, what is the goal that we're trying to achieve? And is my bias as a person affecting positive results or positive change? And so I won't, like, I don't go into situations thinking that I am all knowledgeable, that I have all the experience that I need. I don't even go into that situation when I encompass any choirs in high school. I think everybody can teach everybody something. And so I think with that sort of openness, I think that invites all sorts of collaboration, especially on a seven-member board for the school district.
Thank you. Next is question four. What district challenges would you prioritize as a board member? And what are some possible ways you'd address them?
So I should say, as a newbie, I'm not exactly sure how I would address them, but I do know that there are some issues in the district that should be addressed. We are not giving enough support financially, and we are not allowing for truly open and honest dialogue on the changes that need to happen so that our kids' future can be better. I think we've, it's been, we've been in this kind of rut too long where we're pitted against each other, or like, someone thinks differently, or we have this like internal anger inside, and I think that is reflected in the challenges that we have as a district. We are losing enrollment, people are moving out of the area. You know, we have the white flight where they believe that their children would be better served having private educations where you don't really get that sense of community. And I think that we could do better as, as a district, and what I would, I guess what I would do is hold. That's such, that's such a hard question, because it doesn't, it doesn't really depend on like, how I would address it, because it's not it's what do the kids need, and how can we support the parents in that, too? That's, I think, that, coming from a working family, I think that's what we need to listen to. So maybe it would depend on surveys getting out, how would you like to be more involved in schools? What are the good hours for you to come and, and talk to the school board? Like, what would you like to see? Like, should we just offer free and reduced lunch for everybody? I don't really know how any of that works. But I think that I think there are definitely some changes that need to be made, and I would, I would like to see a little bit more support and a little bit more representation in the school board. It just helps people. It helps people to know that there's someone out there that has lived through their experiences and knows how hard it is to actually go through the American educational school system, especially when you look like someone like me.
Thank you.
Okay, as a school board member, what are some specific ways to keep for the district's schools, students, and public education in Wisconsin?
I guess I don't know how I would advocate until the position or the event arose. Like, I think I would have to see what exactly the issues are, like the ones I stated before, but like, what the people think they are, because ultimately it's what, what they want and what they want to see for their kids. And I would wait to hear what the community has to say, and then I would start thinking what I would do. Or I guess what we would do, because it really is a community effort.
Why are you applying to join the school board?
The honest answer? No, I'm just kidding. Um, I'm applying to join the school board because I think it's been, for so long, it's been kind of like, for me especially, as a person of color, as a woman of color, an immigrant undocumented. But I became a citizen last September. I think that I think that I apply because I wanted, I wanted to see how it worked. Like, I wanted to see how things and decisions were made up close and personal so that I could encourage other people and be like, hey, look, here's kind of what happened in my time here during the school board, and I think you would be a really good candidate for it. Like, maybe you should think about, about running. It's kind of like, it's, for me, it's more of a, it's more of a this is America, and you can be anyone who you want to be, and you can do anything that you want to do. And if you feel like you can make change, you should just go for it. And I think that's, I think that's why I've wanted to do it. And I've also heard from a lot of, from a lot of people that I know that they would trust, trust me and trust how I would get along with everybody else, and trust that I would be impartial in any sort of process.
Okay, that, um, thank you. That concludes our questions. Laurie, how much more time do we have? So you have fourteen minutes, if you'd like to. If you, I know you're, I, well, I, whatever you'd like to share with us at this point, or make a statement of any sort, now's your time. Um, or um, or make a statement of any sort. Now's your time.
That's a lot of power. No, I'm just kidding. Um, I guess, can I ask, can I ask a question? Like if someone like me who is who is interested in, in this type of, of job and trying to make a difference in the community that she grew up, up in like what are some, what are some tips that I should do? Is that an okay question to ask? Like?
I'm, I'm, I'm afraid we can't do that. Um, but uh, after this process is done, I think any of our board members would be happy to talk to you um, and give you for this particular process. Um, I'm afraid we can't do that. We need to treat all the candidates the same.
Oh, see impartial.
You can, you, to be clear, you can ask questions. We're just not in a position where we can answer them.
Oh, I see.
And may I say something too?
Yes.
You don't have to say anything at this point. Not required.
Yeah, it's not, it's not required, but like I said, you've got, you've got time and um, if you'd like to share anything else about you. Um, then this is your opportunity.
Okay, um. I guess like I, I guess the one thing that I, I kind of do want to share is that um, I'm just really grateful to even like be in the finalist position. Um, I was sort of feeling this way of like this uneasy feeling of I feel like I could do something with the way I communicate and the way that I talk. I just don't know what I could do. And I feel like this was a really good place to, place to just branch out and see what, what could happen. And so I just, I want to say I appreciate your time and uh, your consideration for me as a candidate for this position. I appreciate all the, I appreciate all of the work that you do. Hours that are not counted, conversations and you know, probably sleepless nights to create a better environment for our students. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate your willingness to move forward in a new direction. Especially in this climate, especially when after the pandemic and how things have gotten um, I just I'm really grateful to have had this opportunity to share a little bit of why I feel um, the way I feel about a school district that have served me, that has served me well.
Well, thank you very much. Um, that, that concludes our time with you. Um, thanks, thanks again.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Bye.
Okay, um, we are now going to move on to.
Interested in a break in between?
Does anyone need a break?
I'd like some time to.
Okay, then we are going to take a few minutes as people gather their thoughts and review their notes and prepare to um, start the process of choosing. All right, is everybody ready? Okay. Okay, um, yes. Um. First off, if, if you, I just want to say that we are fortunate to have six very strong candidates. Um, it was easy to like each one of them. Um, they were just terrific and answered the questions very well and very thoughtfully. Um, and I just really, really appreciate that. Um, so with that, uh, we're going to uh, be guided by policy at this point as we make our way toward um, a decision. And the first thing we're going to do is uh, open the floor for discussion. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but you can offer thoughts um. If you'd like, Nancy.
After discussion, can you just kind of tell us what we're going to be doing, how this will look?
Okay. Um, so once we're finished with discussion, we will um, open the floor to nominations. So every, any, uh, you can all uh, offer one nomination. You don't have to nominate anyone. If someone's already um, offered a nomination that you agree with, you don't have to offer one. But everyone will get a chance to nominate someone. Um, we will be, uh, then we'll close the floor and then we'll use uh, these post-its, put the name of the person you want um, to vote for and sign it. Kinsey will get those and she will tally them. And uh, if we don't get to a decision, we can repeat the process up to five times. And if we can't get there, then we, um, other things happen, but let's just keep positive here and and assume that we are going to get there. So um, all right, go ahead, Andrew.
Just with your, when we get there, three to two to one would still not be finished. There would have to be a majority. There would have to be four.
Yes, we have to have a majority of four. So, um, obviously the best case scenario is that we're all in agreement, but um, I don't know. Yeah. Go ahead, Brian.
Completely understand your intent on that, but as you mentioned, we have six incredibly qualified and strong candidates that have been willing to step up for their community, plus the other candidates that put their names forward to be nominated that were in the first round. So I, I fully understand your intent on there, but I definitely think that you know, that may not happen, but we've, we've got some really strong candidates. So I want to thank them for coming out there.
Yeah, I'd like what you said about um, stepping up for on behalf of your community. It's really, really important to acknowledge that. Um, so thank you. So go ahead, Lynn.
So what is the goal of the nominating process? What are we trying to accomplish? We have six candidates. There's six of us. We could theoretically each nominate, we could, it's, it could happen that way. So what's the point? What are we trying to accomplish?
Um, we're trying to get to um, a vote where we have one, we have a majority of four. Go ahead, James.
So putting forth our nomination would be, this is the person that you want to advocate for, right? So it wouldn't be a situation where because the other people were nominated, you're going to nominate a fourth to be considered. Bring forward the person that you think should uh, have the position on the, on the board. So really, when you open the floor to nomination, it doesn't go around the table or whatever, just whoever wants to nominate. Only, we will only vote for someone that's been nominated.
Yes.
So James, if you nominate the person I would have nominated, I don't have to say anything. Thank you.
And unlike where most of our items, we have one motion that we're talking about. So on this, all the nominations will be done at once.
And then I think we'll add, once we've chosen someone, there'll be a motion, we'll vote on it and that'll be it. No votes?
My understanding would be that after we have the nominations, James has the special nominating post-it notes there. So do I apparently. And we'll just write down our names. So it won't necessarily be, that'll be our vote. We would not need to accept the vote at that because the votes, the vote.
We've already had it. Okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
In, in the past, sometimes, but not all the time, someone has made a follow-up motion to cast a unanimous ballot for a candidate. Sometimes that has happened, sometimes that's not.
Um. That's something we can certainly consider.
But whether it happened or not, the vote was over when the majority happened. Sometimes it's been on the first ballot, sometimes it hasn't. One time early in my board service. We finished the night three, three and had to come back.
Okay. Oh God, please let's not do that. Um, okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Just with the process of it and James, you provided the post-it notes and I understand this. Can we also write the round number on that in case it goes so? In the upper right-hand corner, we'll write what round it is. So we're all on the same page in case there's a posted note tragedy or anything like that. They get combined.
Posted note tragedy. Okay. All right. So um, uh, are we doing a verbal nomination now? Okay. So I'm going to open the floor to nominations. Anyone want to go first? Go ahead, Brian.
I nominate Rick Crosson for the uh, student board or school board vacancy position.
All right. James.
I nominate James McGee for the school board.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
All right. I, I know I don't have to. I nominate Leah Weekly.
Okay. Anybody else want to nominate anybody? Okay, then I'm going to close the floor to nominations. And um, now we vote.
Well.
No?
No, I think we can discuss.
We had discussion, but if.
Well, I didn't realize that discussion was, I mean, nomination doesn't end discussion.
Um, I think we can go ahead and have discussion if you'd like to advocate for your choice. Go ahead.
I, I thought, I thought Leah was, was very strong, although it is possible that um, it is also possible that I'll vote for James McGee. Um, I think it's important to have choices. Um, I think, I think Leah and James both, um, and the, the reason I, I thought it would be good to have them both in the conversation is the conversation is, and again, I'm, I'm careful, being careful to say that there truly were all six candidates were, were very strong that we advanced, and there were strong candidates that didn't make it past the first round. What's important to me is looking at what where, what brings some types of, of balance to the board for, for who we don't have. And I think a part of that puzzle is the, maybe that part that I did of the new, newer generation, someone with, actually, didn't even have kids yet, but I think having that perspective of many of the people, many of the people here are are, some of the board members right now are retired, some are near more the, the top of their careers, and I think people who are, people like, you know, people like Leah or, or James, who are doing, I guess, more, you know, direct, direct work. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm a little distracted, I might have a small personal emergency, but it's not at that stage yet.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Nancy.
I think we are in a real unique situation right now. And what we really need for this board to do is to pick the correct superintendent. And to me, that's the most important thing. And because of that, I think that Rick Crossen is uniquely qualified to help lead Green Bay area public schools as, as an ever-improving organization. He has hired and led senior-level executives throughout his career. This is important since he will soon be hiring, we will be soon hiring a new superintendent. He has expertise in strategic planning, and we have initiated our own strategic plans. He has experience with change management, so critically important as we deal with the fiscal cliff, the closing facilities, and the boundary recommendations.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I second everything Nancy said, and just to sum it up, because she said everything I was going to say about Rick Crossen. I didn't know a thing about him until I heard him speak tonight. And out of a field of fantastic candidates, it's clear to me that he understands the role of the school board, which I do not believe some of the candidates did understand. He understands our challenges, he's clearly been tuned in, he's been listening, he knows what's going on, even though he doesn't probably in the school district. And he thinks strategically, Nancy said that, but I think that's so important. I did not know that I would be supporting him, but I absolutely am.
Go ahead, Brian.
As I mentioned before, I think we're in a really unique situation of how many of these candidates contribute to our community and specifically to our, our students and our dis, in our district itself, and I hope that people that have applied for the spot continue to contribute to this district, and there are plenty of opportunities, and I'm sure that all of us as board members would like to share those opportunities if, if not selected for this board spot. You know, I, I applied for the position, didn't get it, I ran, I didn't get it, continue now, you're stuck with me for another year at least with it, but just that continual dedication to this district, I hope they continue in, in whatever areas they're strong on. I, I made a nomination, I've got my, my preferred candidate on there, and the same things that have been mentioned before, as far as leadership experience and just the the experience on there, so, thank you.
One of the candidates tonight said that our schools are the heart of our community. I really believe that. And I felt like all of our candidates offered, offered that and understood that and would be ready to, you know, roll up their sleeves and get at it. However, I thought that Rick Crossen comes to the table with so many skills that we need. And I, I was just really impressed with his just very measured approach to board work, which is, as we all know, often deeply frustrated, frustrating, and things move slower than you'd like, and you have, you really do have to collaborate, and you really do have to be patient, and you really do have to understand your role and then forge ahead. So, I will be nominee, I will be voting for him. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll acknowledge hearing Rick's background, that he would be an effective board member on about day three. Right, he has the experience and he has the resume that informs me that he will really enjoy the work of the board because he understands it. I nominated James McGee because a board is a collection of all of whom bring something unique to that position. And having executive leadership experience is a powerful thing. When we look at the last period of time, what I would hope we would add to the board would be someone who brings with them a deep integration into the community. And everything about James McGee's resume informs me that he would need to learn how to be a board member and transition from tactical to strategic decision-making. But I think the, the narrative that he would bring and the information that would be, bring would be the closest to the doors of our community. And I think that's a need right now that we have on this board because we are executing strategy and we meet with district and the execution of our jobs, I don't think people question as much as they question whether we are listening to the community. So, I acknowledge that Rick is overly qualified for the I think in this moment in time, James McGee is very well positioned for the role.
All right, anybody else? Go ahead, Andrew.
So, I do, I do think, still think there's value in a, in an additional candidate, if, if we end up deadlocked or something and we might, might not, but I'm going to vote for James McGee on, with my first ballot. And as for any of the reasons that, that James said, I think, I think too, if you look at, you know, if you look at someone who is among, again, among all, this is not a, a choice where we have any, any bad candidates in this group. I think James McGee's, you know, current, direct, hands-on work in the community, advocating, but also program building, you know, developing right there, face-to-face with, with kids, most of whom are from our, our district a lot in his role. I think that, that direct involvement and being, you know, being closer to the kids brings, it, it brings a different perspective, and it's about perspective, that I'll vote for James McGee on my first ballot.
Anybody else have anything? All right, then I think we are ready to go ahead and yeah.
And the one, the round one?
Yep.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah.
Lyerly, James McGee. Gerlach, Rick Crossen. Becker, James McGee. Welch, Rick Crossen. One doesn't have a name and one, I can't read the signature. Is that yours? Mills? I see it now. And this must be yours. Mills, Rick Crossen. McCoy, Rick Crossen. With that, the board has selected Rick Crossen, four to, four to two. Okay.
I'm going to excuse myself due to a personal emergency.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we vote with unanimous consent for Rick Crossen as our next school board member.
Second.
Okay.
To be clear, I'll vote yes for this. This does not negate the fact that there were two affirmative votes for James McGee in the process. It's a symbolic
Okay.
welcome to a new candidate.
Do we do a, a Kinsey vote or just a voice vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? All right, so we have chosen Mr. Crossen. Andrew is being excused, he needs to go right now. I feel like there was, nope, there is something else. This is Nancy Welch's last official act as a school board member. Okay. Go ahead.
I, I would just like to have an opportunity to say that I, I think James McGee is a very, very strong advocate for the schools, and I hope that he will come back again and that he will run for office and that he will be on the school board. I was so impressed with him, and I don't want that to go unsaid.
I, I agree. I, I totally agree with you. So, Nancy, we're sending you off with a, after a very important decision. Thank you for your time on the board. I'm, I have absolutely no doubt that we'll, we'll see you. Yeah, so, good luck to you and thank you again for your service to the district. So, with that, Nancy? Would you please make a motion, Nancy, to adjourn this meeting?
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? Okay, we're adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school districts website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.